All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for coming early. I will talk a little bit here. We can always revisit these slides. Nothing is new on these slides. It's basically just a regurgitation of what was sent out in the packet, but we want to go over them again. We're here to talk about the Fire Department staffing model. And I will cover in the work session our call types and call volume, stress level for firefighters, and different staffing models moving forward. The current model for call types, and we will come back to this obviously as it all encompasses into the major item of the staffing model. Current model is respond to all call types. Current projection for call volume for 2025 is between 639. That is stated linear results from year to date, which were provided by the, in the packet to year end. And then I also, based on the projections that were done within the software, it says it's 662. And that's based on last year's numbers of how many calls we had from today or year to date to the end of the year last year. And then it says that same percentage will happen for the rest of the year. So it's somewhere between those. Again, that's the current projection. It could stop tomorrow. We could have no calls for the rest of the year, but again, we don't know that. And again, we're anticipating a 10% increase in calls for 2026 moving forward as well. So that'll be roughly 720, which has been the numbers that were used in the staffing models for the numbers and hours that were used in the financial stuff.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yes.
What are we at right now?
We are at 420 calls. Projected to be current to date is 647. Current incident change is roughly, it's down a little bit at 7.12.
So 647. So somewhere in my 639 to 662 number again.
So 620 right now projected to, I'm sorry, I wasn't reading fast enough.
Yep. We're 420 today.
Yeah.
Current projection is 647. And that coincides with changes day to day depending on the number of calls. And then it's projected currently to be 7.12. Current, just to get it.
Percent increase from last year, correct?
Yeah. And then current year over year change to date is 13.8.
So we took last year's year to date through today. And today's year to date, today would be 13% increase from last year. Okay.
Thank you.
Obviously, the future model needs to be discussed. That's part of this item tonight. As Councilman has not, has mentioned, adjusting call types, but we've not actually made any decisions on that. So I want to make sure that's touched base on tonight. And then what the call volume is unknown. Excuse me. The result is that all of us want to adjust the requirements for number of hours that our firefighters have to spend away from their families. And how we do that is different for everyone. And it's likely a combination of multiple things. That's the best option typically. Doesn't mean that one way wouldn't help it more than the other way. They're saying that typically it's a combination of things that helps the best. Stress level firefighters, this was mentioned in the packet that was sent out. Our current model is a paid-on-call system where the payroll goes off. And whether you go to the call or don't go to the call, there is a level of stress or anxiety that each firefighter likely faces, whether they can go, can't go, or just choose not to. And the future model is unsure of what the future model brings, but discussing the stress level that each firefighter takes on with the job is important. And the graph is just for representation. It's just a linear regression graph essentially that says the more calls per month we have equals more stress level on our paid-on-call system. 2021, we were at about a three. Now we're at about a seven today based on a, again, 54 calls a month roughly. I know there's been a few months this year that we've been over 54, correct, Chief?
Yeah, we've had, January, February, we were in 62 and 64. And then June, I believe, was our third busiest month, that 59, I think.
There's been a couple of different months, but there have been a few months that have been over that 54 number. And then, again, that graph is not developed by us. That's developed by the national standards, from my understanding.
Yeah, it's just created NFPA 1720 is the volunteer model.
We went through and I gave each one of the staffing models and standby models for, in the packet. Again, I'm going to talk about them just quickly so we can go over them. And then I'm happy to bring up the Excel file, can adjust and amend things, and we can play with them. That's what the work session is for, so you can go through different scenarios and different models. Obviously, trying to keep it as consistent as possible across all three models, so that we're trying to be somewhat consistent with them. But we can adjust any of them as needed. The standby model is a model that was brought up to us by Councilor Solonic. Essentially standby time of seven hours or seven and a half hours, roughly four to 11:30. That can be adjusted. That's just a general scheduled time. Two hours of those time would be at the station, so we're able to amend and not have station maintenance night. So we could not have one more night out of the month that the firefighters are away from their families. They could spend the second Thursday with their families instead of having to do station maintenance. And then five and a half hours of that time when they'd be at home basically waiting for a call. They could go to calls during that time as well. Of course, that's the first ones out the door. That would be going during that call time. So part of the model below is how do we amend those times because they're doubled up? I've talked with this to the chief, and I don't know how to do a better job of this because part of the standby time at five and a half hours, which is that second line down on the graph or the, I don't know what to call it, the spreadsheet, is all those five and a half hours at home.
So to clarify, they're getting paid $17 an hour just to be at home?
That's correct. For those five and a half hours, they're paid 17 bucks an hour. And if they go to calls, and they get paid 30 bucks an hour for that.
But they wouldn't get paid the 17 dollars?
They would not.
Because now they're getting paid the 30. They're not going to get paid 47 dollars.
They won't get paid 47. But that's part of the model that we know what's in there already. I don't know what number to use, and you're the chief of, they're double counted in there because 4,004 hours includes $17 an hour. And it includes the calls for firefighter, all calls at 2736. That includes calls during that five and a half hour timeframe. I don't know how many that will be. I have no idea. Again, we could guess and check, but I don't know. So that's why they're doubled up. So I want to make sure that's clarified, that it's doubled up right now because we don't know which calls are going to happen during that five and a half hours and which ones are not.
So some of that 4,000 hours is doubled up?
Yes.
Yes.
Along with the 2736.
You got it. They're in, they're together because it's expected that you're going to have all, you're going to have calls during that five and a half hours of time.
Right.
But I don't want to say, okay, now we're not going to have the five and a half hours of standby time because if that's all we have, then we have $17 an hour in there. But then we need to take away some 2736 all-call time.
Yep.
Because there won't be calls during that time, or maybe you have calls outside of that time. So it's a little complicated and difficult.
Oh, yeah.
To guess and check, it's.
Well, that's history.
That's life. How many calls typically come in between 4:00 and 11:30 p.m.? Is that the majority, half, less than half?
There, so majority of our calls come in between 0700 and 4:30 in the afternoon.
Okay.
Which is roughly about 400.
Okay.
And then so you've got a deficit of whatever, you know, 300-ish. So all the models are based on 720 calls.
Okay.
So we kept that.
That consistent?
Consistent.
Consistent across all the models, correct.
Correct. So, but so that, so there is double up, but not that much. It's not like most of it is doubled up. There's a small portion that's doubled up.
It depends on how much you think of is too much or not.
Yeah.
I mean, everyone's theory is different. If it's $100, is that too much? Is that not enough? Is it, if it's $1,000, is that too much or not? I don't know. I don't know.
I would just, I mean, if it's a majority, then that's a big deal. But if it's a minority, then it's not as significant.
So outside of that standby time, then those individuals wouldn't be expected to answer calls?
They would still be expected to answer all calls, from my understanding.
All calls, yes.
Yes. So anytime out of that four to 11:30, it would be just a regular paid-on-call system like it is today. That's from my understanding. And maybe I'm wrong. Again, this is Councilor Solonic's model and.
Yeah, I mean, if the bell rings that there's a major fire, you're going to have to have more help than just the two guys that are on.
I'm thinking what the mayor is mentioning is like at noon.
Talking about all.
Oh, at, yeah, at noon.
At noon.
We'd have to have firefighter.
When we figured out the 400-ish calls, it's based on 4.4 or 4.8 firefighters during that timeframe.
During the.
During the day.
Seven to 4:30.
Seven to 4:30. Roughly between 4:30 and 11:30. We'll say there's about 164 calls. And then the remaining between, say, 11:30 to 07 is roughly about 155 thereabouts.
And the 4.4 and 4.8 or six numbers, that's based on your, the number of people that generally respond?
Yeah, and actually, that's actually low. I ran the numbers for Zach the other day.
I asked for the numbers off of the sheet to get what that looked like. I wanted to know where the 4.4 came from.
Today, it's more like 6.3 currently. With about 1.6 of them thereabouts at the station. So it's about 6.1 to 6.3. So the number that's in there is actually probably low, lower than what we're seeing today, which isn't a bad thing. We like to see obviously more. But based on the numbers when we ran this originally, it's around that 4.4.
I would say the 4.4 is on the truck, and then the other people are at the station.
Sure.
Show up at the station or whatever. Just still get paid for the time. They still get paid for the call.
That, that part, I didn't have anything to do with that. You guys are just adding that in.
Yeah, but that's because.
Because I don't know how you figure it.
So are you saying? Across all the models.
Yes, it's consistent across all the models.
So you're saying that if at 1:30 in the afternoon, there's a medical call, and you don't know who goes until that call comes in, obviously, but you don't send four firefighters to just a simple call?
We, so we put out an all-call.
Okay.
And whoever can come to the station. So we're looking for the masses to, you know, because we don't know the number of people that are available.
So my understanding from previous conversations was that the issue was more finding people to come during the day than in the evening. Am I incorrect in that?
No, that is correct. So to get a majority of the 400.
Yeah. So then I guess, why did the standby time go in the evening? If that's not when the issue is, if the issue's during the day, why isn't the standby time for those daytime calls? If that's when the issue is?
I think it's because that's when most of our firefighters are not available because they have full-time jobs.
Yeah.
I'm presuming here, I'm not knowing, because I don't know what our firefighters do for a daytime job. At least, most of them have outside employment than the city.
I guess my question is, this isn't, if the issue is daytime hours, I, I'm not sure having standby time in the evening is going to address the underlying issue of we don't have enough people showing up during the day. If that is the ultimate, like, issue we're trying to address, is that there's not enough people during the day. I'm just not sure that this model would address that underlying issue. Even for, I mean, it might help with a budgeting issue, but like, the underlying of issues, we need someone to show up at noon. I don't see that this model is necessarily going to fix that problem.
The chief will run calls if needed.
Yeah.
But I also want to understand and say that, yeah, the chief can run calls. So we could say, yep, you have to run every call that goes during the day. But then, we need him to do other things to, you know, during the day. This is similar to my position when I was the finance director and then I became city admin. I need to have an accountant behind me to do the journal entries or the, running the payroll or whatever because it doesn't, it's not an efficient use of my time to run that stuff or do those entries or pay, put checks into the system as a city administrator. I don't feel that that's a good use of my time and my efforts. And I would simply, I would think the same thing for the chief, is I don't want to, you know, and all the chief, you know, wouldn't like to run calls, but we pay him, I don't know, $67 an hour. I don't feel like that's a really good use of resources to send him on every call. He can, he will, but doesn't mean it's probably the best use of resources when we could have somebody, and have the chief do something else, whether that's emergency management planning or five-year plan, which I know Councilor Fashion has asked for.
Right, have him do the planning and calls.
Well, emergency response plan or other things that the council's looking for from the chief instead of doing call, call response. Because if you're going to pay somebody for call response, I'm going to tell you right now, I don't think we should have a chief then. We should just have a firefighter. Because it doesn't make sense to have a chief if you want him just to run calls during the day.
Well, it wouldn't be doing non-stop calls.
No, it would not be. You know, you're correct. But I, what I'm saying is that part of this model is that you have all calls during the day and you want, part of the model is 400 calls in a day. Let's get a good response time down. The chief can run those calls, but I don't know if that's the best use of $100.
But what we're basically talking about though is 400 calls for the year is 1 point, I didn't do the math, but.
1.5.
Sure.
Okay. 1.5 calls per, per day.
Per day, all, all day. But if you break it down to just working hours, it's 0.6 with the data that we work in.
Okay. Why would it not make sense to have one standby guy from that? I mean, if you can't go, Kevin should be able to go. Both of you wouldn't be tied up. You might be at a meeting or something where you can't go. So rather than, I mean, to me, we, there's got to be a way you can pull out.
We could, yeah.
It makes no sense to ring the bell because this all-call thing is the dumbest idea ever.
Tell that to a lot of community, that's all they have, so.
Well, I mean, it makes absolutely no sense, makes no sense to have 26 firefighters, not that they're all going to come for a medical, whatever. I mean, yeah, if City Hall is burning down, I suppose you want everybody to come, but whatever.
I think if they had a fire period, it'd be good to have everybody come.
Just like the other night, I mean.
Is the assistant chief available to come to calls?
Oh, yeah. Yep, he runs calls as well.
Okay. But like, from a financial standpoint, is that?
I mean, that's better than the chief, I would say. I mean, I don't know.
That's $30 an hour versus 67.
Correct. Yep.
That was the premise, part of the premise for going full time.
Yes, that was.
Yep.
I know we didn't get what we were sold, but.
And they run a lot of calls today. I do know that.
It feels like for on average, 0.6 calls during the day between 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. that that's such a low occurring thing that it should be able to be covered. And I'm not saying that I don't like the standby model because I think it does add predictability. And like, I, I'm here for that. Actually, I, I like that setup more. I just feel like we're at a point where either we need to do what other communities have done, which is look at the calls we are going to, so you don't get 26 people on a call that could wait for North to get there, even if it takes them 45 minutes. And that's, again.
I think that drives the whole thing.
I, I think so too. And I also know that I probably should have said this last, you know, a couple of days ago. But it would have been nice to see a scenario of like, business as is to compare to where like, this is just, here's got three completely different models that we do now and nothing to look back on and say, if we changed nothing as of today and we did exactly what we're doing right now, what would that look like? And then to be able to kind of morph that scenario into pieces of these different three. And again, that's partly on me for not asking for that, so I apologize.
Yeah, I'm happy to run that scenario. It's not like I won't.
No, no, I, and I guess I'm just trying to acknowledge that I didn't ask you for that ahead of this meeting, and I should have. But I think having the ability to compare to business as usual to these other models would have been helpful.
Sure. Yeah. The duty-cruel-only model, I don't think is even feasible. We threw it in there because it's another model that we could run. I'm going to run through the other ones because I know that we threw four together. I don't think a duty-cruel model is even feasible, to be honest with you. I don't think we have enough firefighters for it. I don't think we need duty-cruel model from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The dollars are not even close to what we need to have for the budget-wise, so I kind of threw that one out for the budget specifically. But I just don't think it's possible. We can touch base on duty-cruel model if anybody wants to touch base on it and what that means?
No, but I guess I should have maybe leveled the playing field to begin with. It would be nice to know what we spent last year and what we're, what we have in the budget this year for.
Was that in that spreadsheet you sent?
That should have been in the spreadsheet. That was in the, in the weekly update when I sent you. Well, I'll clarify, I sent three of the same spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So apologize about that. The first one I sent out was just numbers. And then.
There was a corrected.
There was a corrected one because somebody asked me for some.
The numbers didn't match up on one of them.
Scott had pointed out one of them.
Yes, the numbers did not, no, the, the hours didn't match in the little scenario to the right. The numbers of hours didn't match with what the scenario was showing in the, excuse me, in the budget. So I had to go back and fix the math on it. So I fixed that. And that was the second spreadsheet I sent down that said, apologize about the math error. And then the last one I sent out was on the weekly update last week. And that was after Councilor Fashion had asked me, can you give me actuals for this? And I said, it's difficult to throw actuals in there because the line items don't match. And so I tried to give my best explanation of why line items didn't match. And I apologize if I was way off on things, but I tried to do my best to show where the budget was and where the actuals are because they don't line up any one of the years that we gave you. Maybe 23, maybe we did. It's been adjusted so many times.
Do you happen to have that in front of you? I'm just trying to.
I can't pull it up.
Through my email here in front of me.
Pull it up on the screen.
Um, it even just like, I think this might be it actually. I got a lot of windows open, so I'll, that is a me issue, not a you issue.
So this was the one that was sent out to the council. Just something similar to what you see. So I'll go through this now. So 2023, I put the budget in here. Here's what the budget was, 327,000. And then the actual ended up being 368. And that difference is because of the fact that we had a $40,000 additional $20,000 given to the fire relief. So that was a issue that the fire relief ran into, that they needed to have 2022's budget dollars. And they never actually asked for it during 2022, so they had to come in 2023. It was a cleanup item. Plus 20 grand. And then this state aid contribution ended up being $20,000 more than what we anticipated it to be in the budget. However, we got that revenue in, so it's not like we lost any money in that line item because that's exactly what we got in, so exactly we paid out to the fire relief. So between those two items, which are both 20 grand over each, we are right on budget. 328 and 327. Within a thousand bucks, I'd say is almost right on budget for 2023. Then after 2023 is when we started changing and mixing up things based on what we had wanted to plan out for for the fire department overall. 2024 is when we, we hired an assistant fire chief. We wanted to pay 30 bucks an hour to every firefighter instead of $17 an hour. And then we had planned on putting them into the para program, so we weren't going to do the state fire, state firement by retirement contribution for the state 88 dollars. And so that got, went away. Well, we ended up not paying them 30 bucks an hour because we couldn't use that 2% money that we had wanted to to pay the firefighters. We had to put that into retirement. So we got told by Para that we couldn't use it, and they wouldn't give us the money unless we gave it to the fire relief. So we punted on that idea and said, we can't do that. So we essentially took $100,000 out of part-time employees and put it back down into state fire retirement contribution. That's what the 100 grand is here. And then 17 bucks an hour as 164,000 for current model of 2024. Difference between Para is because of the fact we didn't pay, put them to the Para program. So essentially, 571 was the budget, 487 was the actual. So we ended up, it's at a $84,000 under budget, somewhere in there, give or take. And then 2025, where we're at so far this year. The plan was to hire two full-time fire department personnel. And then the difference was going to be in part-time employees, use that 30 bucks an hour. Again, no dollars for the state firement, fire retirement countries. I don't know why I have such a hard time with that number, that name. And then Para for the pinnacle firefighters and the two firefighters and the chief and assistant chief. I did the actuals through the year so that you had those. And then I tried to annualize them and just divided them by seven and multiply them by 12, so you had an annualized number. And then explained everything over 10,000 bucks. And essentially, it's because we haven't hired the full-timers. That's why we're way under budget there. We're right on budget pretty much with the part-time employees overall, annualized. And the $110,000, we'll need to get this paid out because we don't, we did not hire the full-timers, which means we need to pay their 88 dollars to the fire relief again, just like we did last year. So that's my guess in numbers, 110. I don't know what that number would be, so it could be 125. And I wish I knew the formula, but I don't. So right now, we're projected to be about $104,000 under budget currently.
And what, the under budget from the year before, did that just get banked somewhere?
Yep. So that went into the general fund, and it was put into our general fund, fund balance that we've mentioned that I think I mentioned it during 23 when we had to add to it because we went so far over budget in 23. Not just in fire department, but in every, every department. We had to add back to the fund balance to get to the 40% number. That gets basically added to that 40% number at the end of the year. Doesn't go away. It's still there. It's still utilized for essentially the following year's operations until we get the first half tax levy dollars. And then we're at 26, and that's where the 2026 budget currently lays at is 646.
Did we go to the $30 an hour for, is that, that is not happening?
In our 26 budget or 25 budget?
In the 25 budget.
25 budget is $30 an hour.
That was the budget.
Yes, but it was expected to have way less hours because there's supposed to be two full-timers, so they'd only work so many hours. They wouldn't have to respond to any daytime calls. They would only have to respond to, I can't remember what the, what the deal was. I'd have to.
But are, but they aren't getting paid $3 an hour. They're getting paid 17.
Not all of them are being paid $3 an hour.
None of them are not paid.
One of them is being paid, was being paid.
What, was, yes.
Correct.
Was.
Are we still good with that 30?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the 30.
Okay.
The problem that I have is is the all-call thing. To me, it's much more easier to, to know who's scheduled on Tuesday, you show up on Tuesday, no matter what. Unless you're dead.
Sorry.
Crude, but it's going to work.
One thing I get a little bit lost on here with this spreadsheet is that we've been told that we need to move to a different model, otherwise costs are going to go up. That we can't stay the same as where we're at. But we had 617, 760 in the budget for wages, wage-related stuff for this year. But we're showing an annualized rate of 513, 445. And so we haven't changed anything yet. So we're really operating, continuing to operate under the old model. But it's costing less than what we had budgeted, assuming the two full-time people. So I'm not understanding where the, I mean, we have to re.
You budgeted $30 an hour, didn't you?
Um, I'm not paying them $30 an hour, no, in the annualized one. I'm not.
We haven't changed anything.
Nope, you have not.
But your budget is $30 an hour.
Uh, in 26 or 25, sorry. I don't make sure.
25.
25. It is $30 an hour, yes. That's the breakdown. It was a significantly less number of hours, but yes, it was $30.
The hours were reduced.
They were way reduced because we figured we'd have full-time people. We don't need to have the paid-on-call system go off every time we get a call. So that we don't need to have everybody respond to a call. That was why it was reduced significantly. And I, and the 158, 500 number comes from here, and it's based on 1,170 hours at 30 bucks an hour and 703 calls. I don't have the breakdown for what these numbers mean. This is a better breakdown than we've done in the past, but I think we just took the full.
Right. But it's, it's just the bottom number I'm looking at.
Yes, 158.
There's been about 12, 12, 15, 12 different models, and it's just.
It's the model that we had talked about during the budget time that got budgeted.
Yes.
And we are not doing that currently. And that, not doing that new model was, was presented as being more expensive. And I don't remember the numbers from our earlier budget sessions, but it was stated that our, our costs would go up unless we went to the, the two full-time firefighters model. But it doesn't seem like that's what's actually happening.
Now, I wasn't here. I definitely feel like I'm coming in late to this book. Everyone's on chapter 10, and I'm still on chapter 1. But was that because everyone had already agreed to the $30 an hour? And that is why if we had all gone to $30 an hour, the model that currently exists would have been more expensive? I'm just, because I wasn't there for those conversations. Is that why it was going to be more expensive?
Because the hours were expected to drop significantly.
Well, does it have to do with the relief versus the state aid where that money was going?
Yep.
I'll say, I think it was, they were not like, like, they were exclusive. So you, in order to have one, you had to have the other.
Correct.
And so it didn't work, correct me if I'm mischaracterizing this, but it didn't work to just move everyone to $30 an hour with what we're currently doing.
Okay.
And so in order to get that pay increase, we have to go to the new model because they could be in Para then. And that changed the relief in those dollars, and the dollars we could allocate to that. And there is not budget money for everyone to be paid at $30 an hour and to do all calls and to come whenever they are.
Okay.
And that, and that's why it's more expensive, is because we can't utilize those stated dollars, correct?
Right.
That's exactly correct.
My question with your budget items here, and I'm trying to tread super lightly here. But we're $104,000 under budget, is what you said?
That's my annualized number. That's just based on, okay, if we had the same number of, yeah, same number of calls or whatever. July and then.
Can you unbake that farther for me? Can you?
Were the savings, or were the?
No, I want, the, the savings theoretically should have been more than that. And so I'm wondering if we had continued with the model that we have with exactly what we were doing, can you unbake the baked-in role that we have in there? Because really, that savings should have been 135, 40, 140,000. And so really, what our actuals are technically should have been that amount of money. Do you know what I'm saying? Because then moving forward, that is no longer needed from what we've been told. And so. And so I think that's a starting point of how much did we actually spend on this model compared to what moving to another model would be? Because if it is, it will save us more money, does it really?
Well, it, it amplifies what I think the point was.
Yeah, we can run them, we can run a scenario where it just shows the number of calls and average number of firefighters and just run a simple model of, just run exactly what you're asking for is all calls. And then however many firefighters are going to show up and then that's, they just do simple math and that's it.
Right, but that's not actuals, so this is actuals.
This is actuals today, yep.
This is actuals today, but what I'm asking for, and maybe I'm not saying this correctly, so somebody help me out here. What I'm asking for is what should our actuals actually have been if we had just done the paid on call model? That we believed we were doing, because that gives us a baseline of where we should start to compare new models to.
You're talking about today, like as in twenty twenty five now?
As in twenty twenty.
Sure.
I want you to bake, unbake that thirty some thousand dollars. So that way we know what exactly the actual should have been.
Is it, is it safe to say that when we passed twenty twenty five's budget, we thought we would be saving money over what we were currently doing?
Correct, that's I guess what I'm trying to get at, is did we actually save money?
The whole point of that was we're gonna save money.
It was to pay the, so it was two, it was two objectives, it was to pay the firefighters more money and to make the most efficient use of the dollars, that was what the objective was. I don't know if it was less expensive, because I think anytime you have just seventeen bucks an hour for a firefighter versus a full timer.
I think that last budget meeting, it was very clearly presented to us that it would save us money.
Which, it would, it would utilize the state aid dollars, yes. I mean, the tax levy impact would be less because we can take that state aid dollars that we get and we could put it towards the chief and the assistant chief's para retirement.
Can, can we just agree that whatever we predicted, whatever we budgeted, we undershot that by over ten percent? Why?
Under.
Do we know why?
Well, we don't have two, the two full timers, you're budgeted for two full time, but they're not, we didn't pay it.
But that was supposed to save us.
But now we lose the hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of state aid dollars because we have to give it to the relief.
Oh, are you saying because we didn't move to that model, we didn't actually realize those savings?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
I guess that's not really where I was going, I just wanted to know what our actuals were.
And I'm fine, yeah, like I said, I could run the actuals and say, here's what the calls were, here's how many firefighters go to the, go onto the calls this year. And then just do simple math and just here's what it should be. The thing with your point is, is that um it's the, it's the position that, that Peyton had, that you're trying to unbake, right? And that's, is that true?
I would like to see what the actuals, what we thought we were getting with the paid on call model would have been. Because that's a starting point for moving into the future, because it has been said that that role is no longer needed. And so in this twenty twenty six budget, if we went with strictly business as is, paid on call, that thirty some thousand dollars would never have been paid out.
Correct.
You're still gonna have to have, unless you want them to go over budget every year, you're still gonna have to have extra dollars.
You're gonna have to float them, yes, but we should float them if we have them and not spend them, is what I'm trying to get at, is where does that start? So in order to get a baseline of this is the paid on call model, this is what it costs, if we're looking at just costs, this is what it costs. You have to unbake a role that we didn't know existed, that we paid, that we paid money out to. Because we didn't know we were paying it, we didn't know we were paying it, and in the future, moving forward, we won't be paying it.
So in.
That's what I want to start at, that gives us a ground level baseline start to then look at comparing these models to dollar wise. And how much more expensive is it? And it's weighing the risk versus reward of paying thirty dollars to the firefighters, is it worth that increase? Because right now, you've got things baked in the cake still and you haven't pulled all the ingredients out to get us a baseline of where we need to start.
Yeah, so part of the next year's model of the numbers that you're seeing there, part of it is that stipend for a fire inspector, that is, that's in there. So part of your comment is that it's not in there, which it is, I want to make sure that's clear it's in there. Now it's just being explicitly noted that it's five hundred dollars a month for a stipend.
That's for the fire inspector, your, your thing to me was is that that was not part of that role.
Um it was not part of that role that I, I'm gonna leave that one to the chief because it's his role, not mine.
I don't, what I'm not trying to argue about it, I'm just saying that I would like to have a baseline to start at and that's all I'm asking for.
What role are your?
Colton Henderson is referring to the um.
Jason Alaski.
Jason Alaskis and Peyton Bartel's role.
The transfer to Peyton.
Yep.
So in those roles, both of them did fire inspections, they're certified to do fire inspections and then did.
Is a fire inspector like one and two, is that the deal, and they're one?
They're correct.
So I don't know that this has ever been fleshed out, but that was half of your job description. So what happened to that, where are we at, what?
As far as doing that?
Yep.
They can be done, but we haven't been able to get to that yet. Because part of it is, we need to enforce some of the codes and I'm not sure that, like we need to bring thirteen oh six in. Thirteen oh six is, we need to make an ordinance change, which we can do that, but it'd be specific to the areas that have water within the community. Um that hasn't been brought forward yet, because it seems to be an appetite of the council that they don't want to have a lot of rules in place for the community. So.
I don't know what a thirteen oh six is.
So thirteen oh six, Scott, is just, no, I understand it. So thirteen oh six is that as um facilities make changes to their building, where there's water available, it'd be specific to them. So a lot of our commercial buildings to the southwest, those are where we would implement that. So they're added on and then we do inspections in that capacity. But the inspections have never, we've done, we started to do some inspections, like Rain Tree Plaza needs to be inspected, um some of those things. But we've never put, had an inspection program since I've been here. So we try to go out and do some of the I U Ps and C U Ps when those come up. Uh but outside of that, we're not inspecting every single business. We would do mercantile every three years, we would do high hazards annually, so it depends on, you know. You guys are sold one thing and it's not possible.
And it's not possible because?
It can't be the fire chief, the fire marshal, the, the operations chief and all that stuff and emergency manager director, it just doesn't work. There's no way for me to do all of those things. As much as it's sold to you, you can look to other communities, but that's not how it's done. Every other community around us is operating with more chief officers, six value, six figure salaries. In order to get their operations done on a daily basis. I'm asking for line firefighters to help with fire calls and then some fire inspections, I can continue to work on. We've got ninety pages of S O Ps, we need to get community or the city uh trained to include council on the national incident management system. There's lots of things that need to come in place, they can't just put together, we have a baseline emergency management plan, but we need to make it more specific to us. There's many things to do and I know you joke about it, Scott, and you and I have talked about it, we're not sitting around playing cards all day.
I'm not saying you are, but.
But the reality is, is that the thing that I'm frustrated with, and I'll just be honest, is that there isn't a single council member with the exception of you that have come and asked questions. And it's like, we, we want to avoid the question of having conversations with me, I'm not sure why, but I can't educate everyone in an hour.
Well, because it's not a conversation, Gary, that's why I don't do it.
What do you mean it's not a conversation?
When we meet, you tell us the model that you want to have and all the reasons why that's gotta be the model that we gotta have and repeat. It's not a conversation.
Okay, well, what do you want then, David?
What do I want?
Yeah.
I'm not a fire chief.
Exactly, that's why I bring you the information that I bring you, to educate you.
But when we challenge your numbers, your model and the way that you want to implement it for this size community, that is, that, that's just goes on deaf ears. I don't feel like you hear me. And so I don't, I don't need to be in a conversation where it's one way.
I've had one conversation with you since I've been here.
And how did that go?
It seemed to be a cordial conversation.
That's correct.
So.
From my perspective too. And what, what movement have we had on the night, on the item, sorry, Paul? Um that I said were key issues for me in terms of supporting another model going forward, what progress has, has occurred?
What specifically are you looking for?
Like emergency management, operating procedures, fire marshal situation, which seems to get more complicated every time we talk about it.
Well, this is stuff that I pass on to him because I report to him. And so therefore, that stuff should be passed on to you. So there's operational, standard operating procedures that are out there that I've generated eighty or ninety pages. There was no S O Ps before I got here.
I understand that.
Have you personally done that or was that a role of someone else? Because what I was told, there was a copy paste onto our letterhead from Cross Lake's S O Ps that you were given, that there was copy pasted on and sent out, that's what I was told.
Yep, there's some of that because no fire department's gonna recreate everything.
Well, you shouldn't recreate everything.
Right, so some of it was taken.
But have you personally gone through all of it?
Yes, they were written by me to start with and then they're disseminated out to other people to take a look at and then they went out to the organization.
And you took their feedback and?
Yes, they were given an opportunity to provide feedback, I received very little feedback and then they're implemented and signed by them.
I think what we're looking for, or at least what I'm looking for, is I hear, I hear that firefighters don't want to work thirty hours a month, I hear that.
Correct.
Well, the one way that you put a kibosh to that is having all calls. Because you got probably this, the same eight or ten firefighters coming to all them calls. And this comment that was made, some choose not to, that's just not good enough for me, if you want to be a firefighter, you gotta come to the call.
Well, you're gonna see, I mean, is that, that graph goes from three to six, they're gonna be making that decision more often in the negative.
Sorry, this one?
That's why, that's, that's why to me it makes so much sense to go to a scheduled deal on Tuesday, you know you're working.
Well, that's what we're, that's where we're at, that's where Councilman Fashon believes that that's not the model to go to. But the reality is, is that we have come up with a system to utilize our dollars the best that we can. From a capacity of minimizing the interruptions to our paid on call firefighters, so where they're scheduled in the stations, similar to what you proposed that we discussed. Um that is the next step in the model, I don't care who you talk to, you can go and talk to various other people, other communities are doing it a little bit different, like I said. That four hundred calls during the day, they've supplemented or they're augmented their ability to run those calls with four other or five other six value, six figure salaries. At the chief level to run those calls. Here, I'm looking at Kevin and I, um along with the best one that we haven't gotten to yet, I guess, is looking at one firefighter roughly from ten to six. And then having duty cure from six to ten and then doing some medical team stuff overnight. The reality is, is that we're trying to take that scheduled system that you and I are on the same page with, um they don't need to go to those, you know, they don't need to respond to every single call. The reality is, what I need to know from council is, what's the level of service that you want to provide to the community? Do you want to arrive in thirty minutes, do you run, arrive in fifteen minutes, that's part of it, on average, response time is about, should be between six and eight minutes. So that would require states.
I don't think that's changed, I think it's been the same twelve and thirteen minutes, I don't think anything's changed on, on call response time.
Right, but the idea with a duty cure model with them being staffed in the station, part of it is, if you want to look at NFPA seventeen twenty and firefighter safety. Is that we want to get ten people there within ten minutes, I, we're talking structured firing now, we're not.
Right, right, they do.
Um a big incident for a medical response, does the stub tone need ten people? No, that's what I'm trying to minimize, utilizing those dollars and then putting them into the full time into duty curlys, that way it minimizes it. If you look at a successful model, Atsego is coming on board here in the next whatever, Atsego's model is very similar um to what they're looking at. Ideally, we need to get to some semblance of full time augmented with part time staff. We're not where we were thirty years ago when I started in the fire service, even twenty years ago. Where firefighters, they want to help the community, but they want to do it when they have the time to do it. And they're not necessarily all about the money, but the money helps in the capacity of thirty dollars an hour to help them. Um to help them like make that decision as Zach said. And we had a firefighter that was here before, he struggled with, do I go to my business, do I go to the fire call or do I spend time with my family? That's really where we're at today and maybe it's not their business, but maybe because they're at their job.
It's their job, yeah.
It's their job and then they have, right, they have to go to that.
Gary, can I stop you for a second? Um NFPA seventeen twenty, are you looking at us as a rural community or are you looking at us at a different? Because our per capita puts us in a rural community, which would put our response time at fourteen minutes, eighty percent of the time.
We're more, we're more suburban than we are rural.
But according to their calculations, we don't fall into, we fall into the rural category.
So many people per square mile.
Correct, and I did the math and I'm saying is we fall in the rural category, which puts us at an average of fourteen minutes, eighty percent of the time. And if you analyze our data from this year, we're pretty damn close.
Sure. Actually, I think it was significant, I thought it was averaging about eleven and a half.
During the daytime when we have the two full time year or after that?
Averaging the whole works.
Oh, the whole works, okay, yeah, no, I believe we are close if not making or, you know, I broke it out between daytime calls and then the fire fighters at like what our paid on call would be.
What's the break, and I, because I don't know anything about seventeen twenty?
I don't know what it is either.
What's the breakdown for rural to suburban? Because I'm guessing that's the two classifications I, I don't.
Then it goes, it goes rural, urban, suburban, I believe, I'd have to look it up exactly.
I'm trying to look it up.
And only because I don't know if it's like, are we close, are we on the edge, I don't know.
But that.
It, I mean.
But that's for thirty percent of our calls, based on going to seventy percent medicals, thirty percent fire calls, that's really all that's, you know, from a safety.
NFPA seventeen twenty is just for fire calls?
Yes, it's just, not for medicals, it's just for fire calls. So the reality is, is that we are trying to get to making, you know, work life balance and also manage it within the city dollars that are allocated to us. There's only so many different scenarios that we can come up with. We either have all calls where we have no understanding of the number of people, to your point of Scott, of, of how many firefighters are gonna respond. Or we move to a scheduled timeframe. Um and, and I guess the other part of it is, is that this has to be a partnership with the relief association. The relief association, only that we're able to get to where we're discussing today is because they've agreed to um forego their um money from backup assing and gets pushed into police fire repair. So that's where this is a partnership, it's not solely on them and it's not solely on the council. Um so at the end of the day, my question is, what's the response time to the community that you'd like to see? The other thing is, what's the types of medicals that you like to go to? Um the fire calls are the fire calls, but the calls are going to continue to increase every year.
Well, the types of medicals, anything that Paul can handle, that's where I would push them.
I would caution, I would caution you to phrase it that way.
Well, I don't know all the different calls.
No, no, I know, I, I know you don't, I, I would just caution you to phrase it that way, but I have two questions and then I want to piggyback on what you just said. Is care resource connections, are we realizing their impact in the, that call volume that we're projecting to? Of what they would reduce for next year's calls?
That's a chief's, I'm.
Yeah, they're, I mean.
Because when Amy came in and presented to us, she gave the example of Hopkins, whose call volume she kept stagnant as their community grew. And she said thirty, I had it written down, thirty some year over year reduction in calls is what she has seen. And so I'm just wondering, have we realized that even if we're paying them, again, I'm very pro care resource connections, I think it's really great for aging populations, I'm gonna throw a little stab out there. But if we're not putting that in here and we're gonna pay them, you know, six thousand, five whatever dollars for their services, we should be figuring that in. If we really are willing to pay that money out and think that's a good use of taxpayer money, then it should be bringing something back to us, which means we should be realizing that in our calls we're projecting and that we are budgeting for.
And I think the difficulty with that is, and I don't disagree with what you're saying, is that it's difficult, kind of like the, we're gonna have standby time, then have thirty dollars an hour for people to go on calls. Because what happens is, is we might fix that one person that calls six, seven, eight times, but then we might get a new person that calls six or eight times. So really to try to figure out what that looks like, I think there, from year to year, as our calls continue to increase, it's that really big moving target of trying to figure that out. So there's the value of us not going back to that same person multiple times. But then, like I said, when we get the new person that calls multiple times and we're able to get them resources, then that gives us the ability to keep some semblance of those calls down, we're not going back to them. The problem is, is again, is that moving targets, kind of like how many firefighters are going to show up to them?
How do other cities quantify that? Because I know she works all over Minnesota and North Dakota, like how are they budgeting for that, have we?
I don't know other communities she works, I know she works with Sinus Park and Hopkins, but those are established, I know, that's only two I know, I know she works with Talkabout.
She's, she's everywhere.
Sure. I just don't, I just.
Not she, care resource connections is literally everywhere and now into North Dakota.
Sure.
So I'm just saying that I'm wondering, is there a way that, you know, we have connections, we have friends, how we could ask, how do they budget around that? Um and then the second thing, to go back to your thing, Scott, I didn't mean to hijack your question. I think for me personally, it would be helpful for you, Gary, because you are our chief and our, you know, subject matter expert, to go. To go through the calls that we go on, all of the, like, the code, whatever they come out as, and rank them. It's a risk ranking at that point. It's, these are high-risk calls, critical that we need to be on, and I know it's going to be very difficult. But then at least that would let us know that what's on the bottom of the list, maybe areas where even temporarily, we can say, we're not going to these.
Suzie that called six times.
Well, not even Suzie, but this typically is this kind of call. And we're no longer going to respond to that. And I understand that that's like not what everybody wants to hear. But at a certain point, we do one of two things. Either we move to this model and we pay a bunch of money for full-time that we may or may not actually need, sorry, chief. Or we start to reduce call volume because all of the other communities, like, listen, the fire community is very small. They reach out, they ask questions, hey, we're on this training with you, what's going on, blah, blah, blah. Their suggestion has all been call reduction.
And there's some of that. But here's just an example to your point. These, and I can get, send this out to council, but when somebody calls nine-one-one, I don't know, there's two and an eighth pages of call types. And then there is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight pages of what the definition is. So for instance, let's just use if I've got a medical.
We can use the Help Unknown today.
Yeah, the Help Unknown.
And I'm not saying you're, they're not going to get it right every time. And I'm not saying that one in pain or one ill isn't going to be a heart call. Like, I'm not saying that whatsoever. Like, that is going to happen. And it's not, I think, saying that gets a bad rap, that we're just leaving the citizens of Dayton out there hanging, or at least that's how I felt that that statement has been perceived. But I think that at a certain point, we have to decide, like, like you said, the amount of service that we are okay where we want to give the citizens. But also, I don't know that I'm willing to go to a model for us to go on eight stubbed toe calls.
Or, or like the Help Unknown today. Let's use that as an example. You are there faster than he is there, no matter what.
Not always.
Not always.
Really?
If we're tied up on something, we wouldn't be there.
Both cars are tied up?
If you're on a domestic, it's a two-car call. An alarm's a two-car call.
Domestic, but how many of those do you have a year?
I'd have to look at my stats. We're.
I don't know. We're playing the worst-case scenario game of this is on fire, that's on fire.
And other cities.
But you went to that call today, right? You responded to that call. And did you go?
I was on vacation.
He didn't go.
The fire department did, yes.
Okay. So how much sooner were you there before the fire department was there?
It took the fire department fifteen minutes to arrive on scene.
And by then, you already know that what the situation is, don't you? Or not?
Today we did, yeah.
I mean, not saying that's going to happen all the time, but.
But if we show up and it's the patient that we had today, and it's one or two officers on duty. You have two officers there with a critical patient for twenty minutes until North gets there, trying to land air care and trying to deal with the ambulance.
But then you can call him if he's needed.
But then usually the ambulance, by the time we called him, we'd be already there.
Page it back out.
So.
I guess that's the point of it. It really depends on what's the level of service that you want to provide.
That's, that's how I would do it. I mean.
There's no way anybody's going to get a perpetuer. If you start manipulating calls, the council's going to have to be aware that there's going to be some calls that we're going to, in quotes, I'm going to call it missed, because there's just no way to do it. Right now, we're making all calls. And so the council has to be aware that if we adjust call types, which is totally fine and within the council's discretion to do, there is risk on, on, not, not necessarily risk like on the city council, but knowing that we may not be able to provide a level of service that a patient may need.
That we have historically.
Based on historical. And that's just, the council has to be aware of that. I just want to make sure it's known, you know, that's, from my perspective, I want to make sure you guys are aware of that.
And at least today, though, it takes that seven back down to three. The anxiety level.
Oh, it would take, you're talking, yeah, you're talking this, this crap year.
So, we know the trade-offs. I mean, we, we don't put a police station on every corner. There's a trade-off.
Exactly, yeah. And that's what.
Some cities do.
Well, we're not that city.
There are some cities that put it on.
We're not the only city that wouldn't be running those calls. I think that's the thing too, is like, we're not the only city that would decide we're not, we're going on every single call. And that's fine.
Can I, those lists have to be, I mean, this, this exercise has already been done with other cities.
Mostly them that they're bigger, or I would say bigger as in they have either more people or whatever. I mean, Noga Champlin doesn't go on every call.
Right.
I mean, Maple Grove and Gassing doesn't go on every call.
No, they, they do extrication, CPR needed, and.
It's like another community that's about our size, like, Corca doesn't have their own fire department. Corca doesn't have their own fire department.
But West Metro.
West Metro runs.
Their fire department goes on pretty much.
Yeah, but they go on every call, don't they, mostly?
But why would the distribution be any different? Like an Oka Champlin?
It would just be, yeah, probably just a different ratio.
Oka Champlin is running more and more medicals over time. They're running a duty crew from five, I think, five to ten at night, Monday through Friday.
Yeah, they, they do run them at night.
So my question to the council is, because this all was done, it boils down to operations, I understand that, but it boils down to me with the budget. And that's why we're having this conversation today, because I need to know what to put in for budget numbers. I could put any number down on the piece of paper you want to see, but there's implications of that, of what, what can we do when we may handcuff ourselves from that aspect. So I'm fine with running a different scenario. I just need directions from the council tonight of what you want to see. I'm happy to put anything down on the piece of paper. We can do it right now too, in the council chambers here.
Well, I don't like, I don't like the seven to, seven AM to four PM all-call thing. To me, you've, you've, we've got four or five guys that are here on, on just about all day calls, I think.
It just depends. We get.
I know John, I know John Knutson goes on a lot of day calls, but he's very flexible.
If he can, we do have, you know, there are people that make day calls.
I think there are certain firefighters that, yes, that would like.
It depends on what's going on with their job.
Right. Right. So to me, if you pick five, six guys.
Go ahead.
Sarah's having.
Five or six guys and that's yours. I mean, point six or even if it's point one call, I mean, between you and Kevin, I mean, one of you guys should be able to go. But you want two in the truck, right? Is that what I understand?
We need to have at least two to go. I mean, because if they can't go, then we need to have two.
Yeah, I will say that I've, I've seen Kevin or Gary run on a call at times. I mean, we've been in meetings and they're like, I gotta go, so we're out of here.
No, I get it.
Whether it's those two or just one of them, takes off, they're out of the trucks.
So, again, I'm still on chapter one of this book. And in chapter one, it sounds to me like we've got two issues, which is the budget for the city and how much money we have for the fire department.
Yep.
And the other issue is that our current model is burning our firefighters out. Like, regardless of whatever, but like, there's, there's a stress level on our current firefighters. Is that fair to say that those are the two underlying big issues? That there's money and our current model is stressing people out?
I think it depends on which way you look at it.
Okay.
The second.
Okay, so some of the firefighters are not stressed out about our model.
No, I'm not saying that. I just, they're penalized for every call. So whether you're at your full-time job or not, you still need to make the percentage of the calls. Instead of it being five o'clock on, this is your calls, because if you do the numbers with that and they wanted to make their twenty-five percent of all of the calls, it's really making sixty-some percent of the calls that come out when you're done with your regular job.
Actually, it's, yeah, it's amplified, because if you have as many calls in that series.
It is, because there's not as many to make. So if, again, if we removed, you're penalized for seven AM to five PM or four PM, whenever, I'm not sure what hours we work. But when we're there, and then you're only responsible, if you will, for six to seven AM the next morning, your twenty-five percent goes way down.
But our, but our current model is stressful. As it's laid out, it's stressful for.
It's stressful because you may only get a couple of calls in that time and you have to make every one of them to make your numbers.
Exactly.
So I guess what I'm saying to you is, is though it's stressful, yeah, because it's not set, or was at one point in January, thirteen calls for the whole month, gives you more predictability. I understand that. And I'm saying, like, I guess for me, if you did the duty crew in the evening, that sounds great. Medical teams going back to, I don't like medical teams. Response teams overnight, great, that was also gave predictability. I'm just not there with a full-time firefighter during the day. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
I think the two bottom line things are what Sarah mentioned.
Those are the stupid things.
Now, there's multiple factors that go into the stress level, which to your point, Stephanie, like, there's other things like, oh, this percentage of calls and all those.
To answer your question, yeah.
You're going to do away with that without schedule.
That's what I'm saying.
It's going to be gone.
Sorry, I didn't mean to hijack your thing. But I think it's all on how you are classifying what your percentage is. Because yes, there's an added stress to, I'm penalized for the five calls that came out and I couldn't make a single one of them because I was on my forty-hour job. I gotta make every call that comes up to know that I'm going to make my numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, I think your point though, your two things are dead there. What goes into that second one is there's a lot, there's a lot of reasons.
There's a lot. Well, I just wanted to make it clear that it's not just when you're not at your full-time job. You're penalized for every call.
Yep, yep.
Penalized.
Got it. So, with that in mind, it also sounds like, right now, we have two full-time people who are here during the day. Who, if we didn't have any other duties, we could go to the calls and everything would be fine. The problem is, you have a problem, it's not really a problem, but there are other jobs to do that have to get done. And so, and I don't, I, I, I'm trying to not stir a pot, but like, I just would like to get the facts out here. The reality is, we have codes and ordinances that we have a hard time actually managing and make, like, what's the word I want to use? Going out and, not implementing, enforcing, thank you. And so when, to your point earlier, chief, that the city council doesn't like to have codes, it's not that we don't like to have codes, but we set ourselves up when we have codes that we physically cannot enforce, but yet we have them on the books. That creates, that's, that, that's problematic. We can't have unenforceable codes. But there's two kinds of unenforceable codes. There's ones that like legitimately are unenforceable because like, we don't have the legal right to go on your property and look at something, so like, we can't really enforce it. And then there's unenforceable because we don't have the staff to enforce it. Like, those are two different things to me. And I, I think also then, we have to look at which of those codes are also about like life and death versus which of the codes are you annoy your neighbor? Because the, you know, the junk in your backyard, which is annoying to your neighbor issue, is different than a building burning down and people have died, right? And so like, if we're talking about, we have some staffing issues and that is why some of our codes have not been enforced to the level that they should be, I think all of city council would agree, and I don't mean to speak for you, but things that are life and death, we're okay being enforceable codes, I would assume. But like, you have junk in your backyard, that's a different, like, those are two, is it fair to say that those are two different things for everybody? And so if we need a third full-time person and we have basically been kind of having an almost third full-time person for about two to three-ish years now. It sounds like that already happened and the budgets were fine. And so to me, it doesn't feel like adding a third full-time person more officially with official duties would actually affect the budget all that much, because that's kind of pretty much what has been happening. So am I not, is that not an accurate reflection of what's been going on?
Isn't the model with the one full-time firefighter still has this stipend for a fire inspector?
We, we could remove that.
I would think that's what that full-time firefighter would do, because.
I tried to keep it consistent across.
I want to pause for a minute. Not necessarily, because there's certain credentials that need to go with that. So there's specific credentials. If you want to take those away from Metro West, they need to have certain credentials. And the credentials, I do not possess those. Nobody in the department does.
Mark Locke does.
But we have, I guess my point was, we have, we have basically had an almost third full-time firefighter for a while. Thirty hours a week?
Dollar-wise, no.
Okay.
They were part-time, which means that there were no benefits.
Okay.
And they were part-time.
Okay.
And no job description to actually quantify what was being done, because on one side, we're being told no inspections. On the other side, it was, there are other inspections. And so it's hard to know what exactly was happening. And to go back now, I don't, I don't know what would come up.
But that wouldn't be an dollar-wise.
Correct. And then I have another question about the stipend for the fire inspector. That twelve hours, I'm guessing, is a monthly five-hundred-dollar budget?
Just five hundred dollars a month.
That's what the little red thing.
Is that assuming how many, like, what is the, there's no job descriptions that we were given for that. So like, for five hundred dollars, are they expected to do how many hours of work? Is it based on hours? Is it based on the number of inspections they do? Is it you did one inspection this month, we're still going to give you five hundred dollars? And you did three next month, you're still getting, I mean, what is?
It depends on the need based upon what Metro West needs, if we take that from Metro West and some capacity. So it depends on what's coming in from a commercial perspective. You know, if we need a sprinkler review, that's, you know, a different set of credentials. So it kind of depends on, it's going to ebb and flow and what's there. So hence, the stipend, we, I think it's roughly fifteen to eighteen hours roughly a month. They're probably not necessarily going to necessarily hit that, but then it's kind of one of those things of, okay, they're on staff and they can help with.
Yeah. So from my perspective, and what, and what I put in the thing is it's a five hundred dollars salary for the month. So if you're doing fire inspection work, whether that's a fire inspection of a business, or you're doing plan review, or you're able to do whatever that are needed inspections, I don't know what they are, I'm not a fire inspector, I couldn't tell you. Whatever is done in there, it's a five hundred dollars salaried a month. This is something similar, I actually know the communities that I've worked in, is that they have a salary to, whether it's a training officer or whatever. You're the training officer, you get X dollars per month, whether you do one training or zero trainings or five trainings. I, I use that as an example just because I've seen another community.
I guess I'm just wondering, how then do you keep that person from getting burned out, right? Like, if here's your five hundred dollars, but you've got five inspections to do this month and you're running ragged and we're going to run into the same thing we had when Greg Cruz was in the position where he was taking PTO to come and do inspections, and then he got completely burned out, Cubes came in and he said absolutely not about. So I'm just wondering, how do we keep that from happening? And if, you know, again, we're, want to reduce stress, we want to, you know, make them the five minutes of work-life balance, I wonder, are we setting that roll up for failure if?
I want to know what the full-time firefighter is doing when they're not at fires, because what is it, point six a day? During the daytime?
During the daytime, seven AM to five.
Yeah.
I didn't do that, so.
Yeah. So what is the full-time firefighter doing?
So there's setting, there's lots of things that need to do for training, for management of EMS stuff with the Office of Emergency Medical Services Board. We need to set up for trainings, the running calls, they're doing maintenance in the SLS force.
We should be getting rid of that maintenance.
So if you go to the full-time model, my understanding is that it goes away from the maintenance, correct?
Yeah, but I mean, maintenance from the perspective of, we're saving dollars. We've utilized Kevin's skills and his ability as assistant chief to fix some things that would have cost us three or four times that with him, if we sent it to EAM or had EAM come out here. In that capacity. So there's lots of things that I think that's the, the difficult thing for me and no different than Zach has asked the question. It's hard to articulate what that is every day, but it ebbs and it flows, you know.
So on, on the inspection thing, why is it that you and, you or Kevin can't be the inspector?
We can go out and conduct inspections in that capacity from the fire code, okay? But we need to set that up. There needs to be a model put in place. What's the council going to support? From an enforcement perspective, from a fine perspective, lots of things coming into place.
Why is that any different than what we have been doing?
We haven't been, because I don't think there's been many inspections going on.
There's been base going on. It's been complete base, because that's how my understanding of the council.
Right. So why would that, so if we left that alone?
You don't even need one if.
Why would that change that?
Keep on doing what we're doing.
But then not doing annual inspections.
This position, what we'd look to do is we'd like to try to augment this with Metro West's review of, we'd like to have somebody.
So this would not be a loop of what they're doing. It would be additional.
Yeah, it would. Well, the idea from my understanding, from what the chiefs explained to me, is that it would help us, whether that person is today trained or in the future, we can train somebody, because I'm all about training our people. I think that is a very good quality to have. That we should be able to have somebody to help offset Metro West in their review. This would have then offset the whole, maybe we could have caught the MTL issue that we had just recently. Why? Because we would have had somebody on staff been doing plan review instead of having somebody on a third party doing plan review.
But how are you going to get that person to stick around? We've done this twice, where we had someone in, they hate to treat them.
Yeah, and I'm not disagreeing with that.
And then they leave us. And this is a hell of a lot less money than what we were just paying.
Doesn't Metro West do this for a lot of cities?
Metro, I don't know if they do a lot. I don't know, I could get their point to me.
I just, whenever we take full stuff in-house, I always question that.
If you're actually saving.
The value of it. Yeah, because.
I don't know how many hours it, I'd have to like, I'd have to ask Metro West how many hours they do on fire reviews. I, I don't know that answer off the top of my head. I could tell you that they do. The sheet that we get is this thick and I can't review everything that they do. There's no way.
I get that, but I just, doing stuff in-house.
So if we removed that, right, is that where you're at?
We removed it at seventy-five hundred bucks.
Yep.
It's on every, the only reason I kept it there is so it's consistent across every single month. And that's why, and that's why I left it there. It doesn't say that it's needed if it's on one model or the other, but just for consistency.
Well, it just seems like, would the full-time firefighter do that then? Couldn't that be their job?
Because they need to be.
Because they might be gone six months from now. I mean, it makes no sense to have a part-time person doing it.
Well, they would need to have a vehicle, right, to go and be able. Well, they would need to have a vehicle, right, to go and be able to do inspections, or?
We can try to implement some of the vehicle that we have to do that. Um, but to your question, Sarah, they need to have different credentials. So we can hire that firefighter, um, if we want to make sure that they have, um, plan review experience. So that's a different level that has to be signed off by the state of Minnesota. So, um, we have one firefighter that just received that within the last probably three or four months. That happens to be on the department.
But like, we could hire a full-time firefighter and, and put in their job description at that, like, because when my husband got his job, he, they wanted two trainings, and he had one but not the other. And so the understanding was, he had one year to complete that training to keep the job, otherwise, whatever.
And we did the same thing for the chief. When the chief got the job, we had a fire inspector one in there as a requirement.
Yeah.
Chief didn't have the fire inspector one as the time of him getting the job. We said, you have one year to get it done.
Yeah.
Chief got it done in one year.
So it would be possible for this full-time firefighter to do a similar thing, be like, we, you have one year to get this training, and then they could take on means, whatever this stipend for fire inspection could roll itself into that job?
We just roll it into that.
That's my question. I mean, and I understand that seven thousand five hundred dollars is not, is what is going to make or break our budget, but, um, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what that full-time.
Good use of this.
Um, so, uh, but I just, again, looking at all this, Mike, that this, the one full-time firefighter with a, with a schedule.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Do you want this one, or do you want the?
Nope, the one that had, that one.
Okay.
Um, because that still had the scheduled, right, for?
So this position would run for, if you have a full-time firefighter, run ten to six at night, and then we would have, um, a firefighter, a duty crew from six to ten.
Schedule, which would address some of the issue of like, they're no longer responsible to go to the daytime calls, so that's not being held against them, and they are being, like, to Scott's, here's your day, right? Like, make sure you're free this night, and if your kid has a game, find a different firefighter and swap, right?
Yep.
How many hours are they working a week with us?
Uh, which, which part?
Uh, your, what was your pay on call?
Um, so what we've done still with this model is we've maintained that twenty hours a month.
That includes trainings.
That includes trainings.
And that's enough to put us into para?
From my understanding. So I have a call, I want to make sure that was, I called para, I have a waiting for a follow-up, and that was, I was going to call him today and I didn't get around to it, so, because I needed to call para.
I did.
Great. If you have a contact for me, I'm happy to call him, because I have a contact and they have not gotten back to me in two weeks, so.
I got bounced around a little bit, but I got there. And they gave me the handbook, which lays out all of the different, we, what resolution we need to pass, they have.
It was, we passed the resolution already, that was at the end of December.
Yeah, so they, they lay it all out.
I was trying to figure out that, what is considered scheduled time was by question.
I didn't, they said there was nothing in there for scheduled time.
Okay.
That it was more about the dollar amount than needing to make more than four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So yeah, so that would then be in incorporation from that portion of things that you got information on, which I'm glad you did, because I didn't get that, um, yet. I'm hoping that they call me back, but I don't know if they did. And then, on top of the, the fire relief then dissolving as well, because if the fire relief's involved, they basically get first right of refusal, I'm going to call it in quotes, for the state aid dollars, because it's going towards firefighter retirement.
Yep.
So that's part of the aspect as well. We got to make sure that the council's aware of that. We have to have the fire relief on board too, to get rid of the fire relief, so that that stated dollars can be put towards retirement of the chief, the assistant chief, and also the firefighters when they move to para.
So, from everything I'm hearing, it sounds like this model is an affordable model that reduces the stress on our firefighters. So I don't understand why this model is not, this, this one full-time with the duty crew in the evenings and all calls on Saturdays, why, what's wrong with this?
I, I don't think, I think the baseline has to be reducing call volume. I don't know that we know where, where we're going to be at with anything. I, I suspect our response ratio is going to go up, because your stress level is going to drop.
So your concern is our cost are actually increased?
Sure, but it's going to cut in half.
Not necessarily, based on what statistics.
The ones that you guys gave us from the other fire departments.
As we continue to increase in calls, we have a, when we have a staffed firefighter staff station, I don't have to call for other people to come in at the end of the day.
Well, sure, we could all, we could.
Well, it depends on what, that goes back to the level of service that you want to provide.
Yep.
If you, that, that's what it comes down to. I can, you know, I can go through here, as council member Henderson requested, to go through and determine what I believe, um, would be considered a, a call that we don't need to go to.
I asked for a ranking.
Yep, we can do a ranking.
A risk ranking.
What do you want to base that risk on?
What you believe is critical. Because you are a subject matter expert, so I'm leaning on you, and I'd like you to help me along here to understand the critical calls that we, maybe even take this years, of all the ones that we went on, and we were called out to, and ranked them, because I do believe that there's some room in there to still adequately meet the expectations of the citizens, and removing some of the calls that don't warrant twelve people showing up to at two o'clock in the morning.
Or ten o'clock at night.
Whatever time, and I just pulled that out of my mouth, but whatever time it is. But I also, going back to Sarah's question, I don't, this is my personal opinion based on the analysis that I did that you have not seen. I do not believe that our call volume even now warrants another full-time person being at the station all day long. I'm not saying that next year I won't feel differently, but at this moment, looking at the calls from actual, actuals for this year until June, I believe that at this point, we could cover them with what we have. And that's based on the analysis, based on my not as high-walking experience, but having said that, I do not disagree that having some sort of a duty crew gives predictability, which is, again, one of those, what's the problem statement? One of those key things there. And I would very much like to look at what that would look like.
Okay. So basically having our two already existing full-time fire employees, chief and assistant chief, basically handling most of the calls from the daytime working hours, and then a duty crew, so kind of like Scott's model in some way. Not that it's your model, but that first one we looked at.
Yeah.
That, and even though on paper that looks like it's more expensive, we're thinking that's not actually more expensive.
I don't know if it is or not, I'm, I'm not wrong there.
That's not a scenario that we have.
The problem that we have with the whole thing is it's all projections, so you don't know what's, what's right.
And again, if we do go down the road of like, a risk ranking, if you will, of those, and we say, you know what, for this next year, we're not, we're going to take these ones off to figure out what we're doing, and we find that, you know, we're adequately serving the citizens, things are going well, then that's wonderful. If we say, nope, we want to add these back on, and I understand the budget is a little bit different, and I get that.
Make sure, I need to have a budget number, so they have the next council meeting. And again, we don't have to pass a next council meeting, but I prefer to, if we can. I need to know a number to put in there for the budget for dollars, or what you guys needed for follow-up for information on what you need. And from what I understand right now, it's the risk ranking of the call types, that's what I have so far, and that's all I have.
Three sixty is my number.
Three sixty total, like, so if I, uh, I'll go, oh, go back here. I'm going to use the number, the bottom number total, three sixty, that's your number.
That line over on the bottom.
Bottom right corner is the total.
That's three fifty-one, but what I don't know is, we've been hammered with this full-time, we got to have full-time. I don't know if any of these numbers are accurate, just so that number's lower. I don't know that answer.
It's just, yeah, I'll tell you right now, it's a total swipe. You could throw them in and go, yeah, this, as best you can, because.
It's more confusing, because a different number of total service hours is used on every one of them.
Every one of them, yeah.
Total service hours, what do you mean? So because of the full-time.
If you add up that first column, the twelve, the four thousand four, and so on, down to the bottom, you'll get a total number of hours, right? If you go to the next model, you'll get a different number. You'll go to the next model, you'll get a different number again. So I, it's hard to say that we're comparing apples to apples here. And I can understand there's, you know, there's going to be some variation, because there's some things you don't do in one model versus another.
Yep.
But there's a, like a forty-five hundred hour swing between the highest and the lowest.
Yep.
And it makes me hard to feel like I'm looking at actual numbers.
So the reason why you're seeing that difference in the number of hours is because if we don't have a full-timer here, or two, or whatever, I have to put a four point four average number for number of firefighters that are going to show up to a call. So the one call that I normally have one hour on and model whatever.
Is that based on actuals, or is that?
So the actuals are six point six total.
For all hours, correct?
Um, no.
Did you break it out for the specific times?
Yeah, it's broken up. Um, the chief ran it for me, seven to four thirty, four thirty to ten.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, ten to seven. Five point four was the lowest, and that's ten to seven in the morning. So I use four point four. And again, that's why you're seeing a difference in hours, is because I have to expect that four point four firefighters are going to show up for one call, when a full-timer might only call for one call, if that makes sense.
Biggest problem I have with the whole thing, and we've seen probably twelve different scenarios on this whole thing.
I can, I can run you fifty more if you really want me to.
But none of them are realistic. And what, what puzzles me is the whole thirty thousand dollars that's happened for the last two, two and a half years?
Hmm, just since January?
No, it's been Jason Alaski.
He was not paid the same dollar amount.
Regardless, the hours are the same.
Hours were the same, but your dollar per hour is one point seven times what he was making, so it's not the same.
Part of what I'm, where I'm going with that is, whether or not, I didn't know what was happening, number one, and to approve a budget, you can't tell me that you know you have thirty or forty thousand dollars extra in your budget at the beginning of the year.
It's, it's a, it's a swag, it's scientific, you-know-what guess, at the end of the day. I mean, and looking at it and trying to get, you know, David wants a lot of things done. It doesn't come just because I'm one person can get everything done, because I can't do it. There's not another single.
There's two of you here.
Well, there is, but there's many things to do, and that's the part that the council does not understand. If you want to go and educate yourself.
I haven't heard of what they are, though.
But go and talk to other organizations.
All right, so we're off, we're off topic.
Hold on one second. It would be nice to know that, though, right? Like, it would be nice to know the things, like, that are beyond what you feel like you're able to accomplish, because that's how we are able to say this position is warranted, right? Like, so if you need an admin, that's one of those things where if you come forward and say, these are the duties that I need to be have done, and I need X, Y, and Z, but we have no way to quantify that, and that's my problem.
So what we've covered in the, the, so, and I've said this example numerous times, between Jason Alaski and Peyton, they, we implemented our new records management system to include all inventory items within the city. Everything got labeled, everything got implemented in, and we had to set up a records management system. So that was a transition that started in, uh, October, November, this timeframe, and we need to get that done by the end of the year. So that was being done with Jason Alaski before he left, and it was picked up by Peyton when she started. And then it continued from there. Then we implemented the office, like I said, in her resignation today, um, putting together internal training, so we can manage our training as far as the EMS RV stuff, so that we're not have to go out, so firefighters aren't having to go out and do their training outside of the organization, where it's roughly costing us, you know, I don't know, twelve hundred dollars or whatever it is, for them to certify outside the city, we're able to do those hours internally. So there's lots of things and finite things that come into play, outside of, you know, emergency management, you know, we're, we're, we're behind in emergency management. We've been, there's no, we have a base plan from Henry County. The problem is, I don't, we don't have staff that are trained either. Right now, they are working on GIMS seven hundred throughout the, the city. So I mean, we're, over our time, uh, but, you know, there's lots of things that can be discussed, yeah.
I'll, one last thing, and then I will leave you alone. I'm just wondering why back in January, February, March, April, May, June, July, that couldn't have just been said? Because we could have started this budget season going, okay, these are the things that this role is doing, instead of being told we can't know, or you're too deep, or blah, 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 blah. I can't help you unless I know where you need the help.
I don't know, no one, I guess I'm, what's the, I mean, no one has asked the question.
I asked it in our other work sessions. I've asked you for seven, eight months, your, listen, we don't have to get into it. A lot of people have asked, and until this day, right here, right now, at this table, you were unable to say what that role was even doing, not even one thing, other than admin work. And so what I'm getting from this conversation and our previous conversations is that I don't actually know what that full-time firefighter would be doing. I don't actually know what that inspector would be doing, and giving no job descriptions, even a tentative, this is the kinds of things that they would be doing, I am a hard no on adding any sort of stipend for an inspector, and a hard no on any full-time fire. I would love to see a scenario that has more of that duty crew standby for the current pay-on call, moving to a more scheduled shift. Um, a hundred percent behind all of that, but that's just where I'm standing based on not feeling like there's transparency in any of our discussions. And I will get off my soapbox.
What did you say we were at for on, um, for predicting what our actuals would be at the end of this year?
For twenty twenty-five? So it's somewhere between six thirty-nine and six sixty-two. Again, I could be way off. I just took the linear results that were on this sheet that were given to you guys.
No, I'm talking about dollars.
Oh, dollars?
Budget. Because you're, you're sitting where?
Three fifty, three sixty. I mean, we can get it done for that. We already know we can. And I think that it's probably baked a little bit high. I mean, three fifty, you can get it done.
Right now, in the, in the budget's more than that. I mean, in the budget.
Well, that's not counting his salary, though, that's just.
Yeah, the budget total is six forty-six.
Right.
That did not, that, those numbers did not include the chief's or the cur, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're not in there.
Six forty-six is the current number that's in the budget today for twenty twenty-six. And that includes both the chief, assistant chief, and.
You're predicting that'll come in at five something?
Uh, no, that's this year's budget, twenty twenty-five. Twenty twenty-six is what I'm referring to.
No.
So what do you want, sorry? So when you say this budget.
There was going to like, uh, R K, sorry, yes.
The current budget, twenty twenty-five. So when you say current budget, we're working on the twenty-six budget, so when you say current, to me, I'm in twenty-six.
Yep.
So in twenty twenty-five's budget, it's six hundred and seventeen thousand. I'm projecting it to be at five thirteen, and I'm including a hundred and ten thousand dollars of state aid going to the fire relief in twenty twenty-five. In twenty-six number, so currently it's six seventeen, I'm projecting, or I'm, currently in the budget, I have six forty-six. Hold it gets divvied up, I don't really care, but six forty-six, six forty-six even is what I have in this year's budget for salaries.
Does that include relief?
You, uh, does not include the relief dollars, no.
So the relief dollars go back, come to the city, or they go back to?
Come to the city.
So what is that if you take Kevin and Gary out of it?
Because that's really the number, yeah. Because that's that number, right?
Yes, it would be, sorry, it's, um, it's this number.
Whatever, but like, that's the one that you're using.
Yes, this is the one that I used.
Three sixty plus.
Yeah, three sixty, and then the difference is, six forty-six is, excuse me, salary and benefits for both Gary and Kevin.
And Scott, you're saying your three fifty to three sixty all in, or just for?
You got to, you got to add, you got to put that on top.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So either, so, and I figured this would be the case, because that's kind of where I had it. It's either going to be one full-time if anything, or if it's going, or it's going to.
Be the duty crew.
Some sort of standby duty crew model, whatever you want to call it. You can pick a name, whatever you want to call it.
For me, the, uh, the full-time guy, I mean, you're going to spend eighty, eighty-five thousand a year on that for that point six calls per day?
Well, they're there longer, that's just seven AM to five PM, so you have to move it, and there is a higher percentage of calls that come out between after five to six. I mean, I think you totally look at what the number actually is, if you like.
And we could still change this. It doesn't mean it can't, like, change, I just have to have an ability to adjust after September. And again, we don't have to prove on the ninth, but if we can have another work session or a discussion, you want to have another one, I'd.
What does it?
And I know we have, we're all seven minutes over time.
If you use a number like three sixty for this portion of the budget,
Mm-hmm.
what does that end up looking like for the total increase in the fire department budget over twenty twenty-five? Because ultimately, we're, we're trying to get to an eight percent or less levy increase.
Yep.
So, these line items are only one part of that.
Yes, fire department's only one part of that. Obviously, there's lots of departments in there, so, yes. And other portions with the fire truck, which is a lot to worry about.
Right, but we're, since we're spending this time on the fire department, we'd like to know what the, using that three sixty number looks like when you add all of the rest of the things in and compare it to last year. What is that increase?
Sure.
Or decrease?
Do that. Do you want me to run a scenario? I know that Stephanie had mentioned earlier in the work session about running a scenario for, what does it look like today if you unbake the? Do that? Do you want me to run a scenario? I know that Stephanie had mentioned earlier in the work session about running a scenario for, what does it look like today if you unbake the cake and get it to baseline today, or? Does that, I know that you mentioned that, Stephanie.
I think for me, it'd be a comparison of what we actually, like, where's, it gives me a baseline, I guess, is my, it doesn't necessarily matter. I mean, I can unbake it myself, too.
It's gonna be difficult for you to unbake it yourself, because you need to pull out that person for the calls that they ran as well. So again, it's a little bit more, needs to be more fine-tuned in that capacity, because they're running calls and they're doing work, so.
At the same dollar amount per hour.
Correct.
So I could run that. I hear any opposition, so I'm gonna go, yes, run that, okay. I just wanna make sure I'm getting the council to looking for.
No, I, I hear you. I was sitting a little uneasy after. Is it possible to, before we decide on a full-time or inspector, to have some sort of?
Oh, this is, you're not approving anything tonight?
No, 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 I'm not saying that. Would it be possible to have some sort of job description layout?
Hundred percent.
Not a perfect, this is, you know, and like, what percentage, like, what is an essential, what is like a marginal, like, this is ten percent of their time, this is whatever, so that way we can really quantify, like, what are we actually getting for that full-time position?
'Cause to Scott's point, paying it to go to point-six calls is not worth it, but if they're doing a whole bunch of things, it might be.
I think that's something that most certainly can be given. The reason why I didn't have it today is because I didn't wanna provide this information, or provide, have the chief spend a bunch of time, and me spend a bunch of time reviewing these things, and you go, actually, no, we actually hate that. Now we've just wasted, you know, two, three hours of time, and again, two, three hours of times, two, three hours of time for me. I'd rather not spend that time putting together a job description for you guys to go, yeah, we hate that, and it makes no sense. So to your point, Stephanie, I'd love to. I, I would never put something, learning from past experience, I would ever put something in front of you and say, hey, why don't you approve this thing, and then not give you job description?
No, no, I appreciate, I understand. It's, it's hard to get behind it at this point, if that's what we're looking at, not knowing, and I suspect that sixty-four thousand dollars isn't gonna be enough to cover everything that we would want that person to do, compared to other cities, what they are willing to pay. It would be nice to know, and then we could do some, you know, looking at other cities and windows.
Can I, one quick question. So you want them to have the skill set of being able to do plan review, or do you just want them to be fire marshal?
Inspector, you mean?
Inspector, inspector one.
I guess, I don't know enough about what that means, like, 'cause you have stipend for fire inspector, and that's five hundred dollars? Doesn't seem like a very complicated job. I mean, when I'm looking at that salary, right, like, here's five hundred dollars, go do this.
I don't, I don't think it's enough to get the credentials of what you're looking for, as far as being able to do plan review and all that. I don't think you're gonna, someone, I think you'd be hard pressed to find somebody.
And that's why it's not making sense to me, because it says fire inspector, but they're gonna get paid five hundred dollars. Like, that doesn't, and so I need to know, like, like, that's why, at that, I'm like, well, then why can't the full-time firefighter do it if it's just that, you know, six thousand dollars? Um, so, but, but then clearly, obviously, then I'm being told on their hand, no, 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 it's way bigger than that, you're not, so it's like, well, then those two things don't, why not?
So the reason why we didn't put fire marshal in there, or planner viewer, or whatever you wanna call it, 'cause I don't want, this is from my direction, I don't wanna pigeonhole it to be, you know, only certain people. I would like to see more people go for it, so we can train more people in the department. That was my goal for it. So if you wanna say the job role's bad, sure, you can point to me and say, yeah, you did the bad job role, because I want it to be more than just one person. I want it to be, who's the best candidate for the role?
Different kinds of fire inspectors, there's different levels of them, and then there's a fire marshal, and that's a different thing also. Okay, and I don't know enough about any of those things to be able to know what's realistic and what's not, so.
And a plan review is gonna spend twelve thousand dollars just on MTO?
All right.
Sure. Yeah, I have some items. I'll get those to you.
We adjourned?
Can I?
We adjourned.
Can I take a second?